My open Board of Selectmen meeting, April 11th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. This is an off-night meeting. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
Okay. All right, and we have no audience tonight, so I'm going to not call public comment. And as it's an off-night, we don't have any minutes or warrants to sign, so we'll go straight in. The first item was the Seoul Systems lease, which we took no action on at the last meeting because of a sort of 11th-hour question that had come up from the audience from Mr. Williams.
Yep.
And just so you know, Mike immediately reached out to our consultant, Beth Greenblatt. Beth was, I think understandably surprised and concerned that there were concerns so late in the game and said, "No, we had crossed all those Ts and dotted all those Is." However, she took a third, fourth, and fifth look at the mapping and the GIS overlays. There appears to be a very small corner that has nothing to do with us relative to any restrictions on the property. And I think that's important because I think what came to us that night was, "What do you mean? You can't do anything there." And that's not the case.
Okay.
What is the case is that with the Solar Group, the SMART program that they're working under, is really going to look disfavorably on them if they end up putting solar up there, and it would affect their bottom line. So they don't want to do it.
Okay, great.
They're adjusting their maps ever so slightly, but it really was slight.
Very good.
Didn't have anything to do with us, didn't need to delay the contract.
So the issue is resolved.
The issue is resolved, and I would entertain a motion.
Thank you for addressing that, too.
Yes, thank you.
Your diligence.
I'll make a motion that we move forward and sign the lease agreement with Seoul, in front of us tonight, for our lease with Seoul Systems for the property located at Central Tree Road, Parcel 59A12, and Wheeler Road, Parcel 59A1.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Would you prefer, you want me to take notes as clerk to...
I'm thinking Mike is going to just end up looking at the tape and taking notes off of that. I mean, if you want to take some and submit them to him, but my guess is he'll take them off the tape.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think we have our originals with us. If everybody wants, we could take three of our copies and sign them just to have them.
I just wrote on mine.
We won't use yours.
Mine's clean.
Okay, so how about Skip, me, and Jeff?
Yep.
We'll all sign these copies. Worst case, if we have to sign again, we'll bring it back.
No, your pen, your signing pen?
Yeah, well. It happens when you're the clerk.
Well, I don't know how many people are, while everybody's signing, I don't know how many people are staying for their FinCom meetings, but Becky Tuttle was on their agenda for tonight, and she is unfortunately home, sick. So they may have a shortened meeting as well tonight.
Let's stop that. Is the first one?
All right, onward. As we know, FinCom wants to be in the room when we place warrant articles, and we gave them a date for that. But the goal was to at least go through everything we have on paper and have a fairly strong draft the night that we get there. So do you want to start with the special?
Sure.
And just review it? So as it stands right now, there's four articles, the snow and ice deficit. That number right now is anywhere from 70 to about 112, depending on how Joe kind of figures the numbers. He's done some math that includes mileage on the trucks, and he's done some math that doesn't. So we're gonna have to see where that number falls. Last year, we had a final number on April 23rd, so, and he's meeting with the Finance Committee on April 18th.
I don't have a copy of the special. I got two copies of the regular.
Oh, no. We can share. So that's the, that's the little bit of background on that one, snow and ice. That's a pretty standard article for our special.
Does he have a rough idea what he is?
Well, like I say, it's between 70 and about 110 right now, and it really depends on how he does his math because he's looking at snow and ice expenditures a little bit more aggressively, I think, than before. And it's a fair comment. It's essentially saying, "Look, from the months of this to this, the majority of truck time out on the roads was really due to snow and ice." So I get that, it makes sense. I think his point long-term is that we underfund the snow and ice line item, which I think we all know, but we haven't had much choice in that. So where we get the money at the end of the year might kind of be a moot point. But that's the number that's in the range.
Can you just remind me off the top of your head, rough free cash number going into the special, 234-ish?
Well, no, it's 264, and, no, 2... Here, hold on, I'll pull it up. Actually, I think we have it in front of us.
Mike, I know we talked about it.
We did. I had it for a second ago. Oh, here we go. You have the free cash memo from Dan, and I think Dan pulled that, and it hasn't changed. On June 30th, effective March 20th is when he pulled it. So 283, 273 is free cash.
Yeah.
We have committed to earmarking 150.
Right.
To go towards the general operating budget, that leaves us at 130. We have a lot more, I think Mike had said this last time, he had, he had a lot more requests
Yeah.
than we have cash on hand.
Yep.
The next one, the electrical bills, was the discussion we talked about because some of the bills ended up getting charged by Constellation at that higher rate. Over time, we're gonna end up evening out on that because of the deal that Mike struck, but for now, those bills are in the red. So we're gonna be pulling that, those are water sewer electrical bills, and we're gonna be pulling that from the water sewer accounts. The police cruiser lease payment came up in the fall, and we pushed it. Going into the new fiscal year, particularly with the new cruisers in the operating budget, Nick really wants to see that line item for him cleaned, and if we have the money that we make that last cruiser payment. Is it super time-sensitive? No, it could wait again until November, but we've pushed it off already once.
How much is it? Is 15,000 paid off? And that, but it also, what, allows them to get into the lease, I think it was the timing, right? That he wanted all the fleet to be...
This is the last payment on the oldest one.
The oldest one, and that allows, so we can start with the lease.
Yeah, kind of cleans the slate for 2020. That last one is something fairly new from Joe. We've done this a couple of times in the past. It wasn't necessarily written down as town beautification. I think at one point, we put in 9,000, it was for playground, right? We had a huge mulch purchase to make because the, the depth of mulch was unsafe. I think he's just finding that for all the things that people have been asking him relative to maybe not seeing the town in the condition that they want it to be in. Yeah, it's a, it's a bit of a random amount. We probably need to ask him more about it, but he did put that question.
That'd be nice to know where that number came from.
Yeah, I agree.
Just electrical type all around. Electrical.
So this is really just a little bit still up in the air until we get actual numbers
Absolutely.
and everything, but that's what, kind of what we're looking at.
It is, and we had other requests. We had requests for a printer, copier, and computers by the senior center. The number was pretty high and apparently hadn't gone through our IT people to get a sort of solid number. Nancy indicated she could wait till the fall for that, which would be appropriate for her. I want to say there was one other thing that had come up under, under requests and...
I think EdCom had requested to fund, if they get their account created, to fund, but that wouldn't be the special.
No, that's, that's on the next one, yeah. Can any, it's an odd question, but can anyone think of anything that we've been dealing with that would involve a financial transaction prior to the end of the fiscal year? Not a typical question, this is more of a mic question.
You just answered your own question, that's a mic question.
That's a mic question.
You know, I can see, isn't that big water sewer bill we got? It's only I can say it's gotta be done by January, right?
Yes. Yes.
But I thought it was by the end of this month, or by the end of this fiscal year.
Well...
Yeah, well, yeah.
The outstanding bill.
The outstanding bill was due, you're right. We've asked for an extension through June, June 30th. Actually, we didn't even ask for an extension. They asked for the date that we planned to pay, and we indicated our date was June 30th, and it was pending town meeting action.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there was no response back from that? Because I remember seeing the letter.
Not as of yet, but it hasn't been that long. All right, want to move on to the annual town meeting warrant? Okay. First one is consistent, that will not get moved. The second is typically salaries and compensation of elected officers, typically doesn't move.
Will we number on these now, or...
We can, but typically we'll do that when we place them. But if we, you know, if we feel like there's not gonna be much movement, it could be worth it. I will say, and it's probably worth our conversation right now. Usually after A and B, we jump right into the schools. I think the question this year is where we would like to see the managed growth bylaw in all this.
Right.
I think we should see it earlier than later.
Okay.
That's just me.
Okay.
Before everybody gets that school stuff done and says, "See you later, bye."
Certainly before the school.
Unless they get embarrassed again to shoot a stay.
I know we should have Joe prep a speech, huh?
So a couple of, a couple of warm-ups beforehand, and then managed growth, and then some business, and then schools at the end.
Okay, so as of right now, the managed growth bylaw is on page six. And we've, we've been calling it that for a long time, but as you can see in the listing here, it says development rate limitation bylaw.
Yep.
So if I use my copy as a draft, I think where we're headed is we leave A as one, we leave B as two, and we then jump, and we make
Yep.
Article X, the one that's labeled X, that's our number three.
Yep.
Okay.
Label X.
Yeah, well, he did A, B, C, D, and then we're gonna number them and he'll jump them around. So page six.
No, none of these are...
It's at the top of page six.
Mine different than yours?
It's all changed, Wayne, I think.
Yeah, really? What did you get?
Does he have an old one from Monday? Can you check that one?
Wait. What do you got on page six?
That should be the same one.
Oh.
Page is on it.
What does he have?
Is there another new package in here?
There's left.
Yeah, right. All right, throw that one away.
Yeah, right in there.
There we go.
Oh.
Good now?
Yes, I was looking at the old one.
Oh, all right.
Well, this is the special.
So let's make sure we're all looking at the one updated, updated April 10th.
Yep.
Yes.
All right.
Yep. Okay, so one, two. Skip the page five.
Yep.
For six. Article X is now number three.
Three.
Number three.
Back to the schools?
Yeah.
Yeah? It's our usual, four, five, six.
Okay.
Which one did I, sorry?
So with the schools, they have Bay Path first, so C turns into four. And then D, E, F, and G are the typical order of the four broken-out watch use articles.
Okay.
So we'll do, minimum local is five, E, debt service is six, F, transportation is seven, and
Operations.
Operations is eight. The next one, H, is general government.
Nine.
Nine. Debt service? No reason to move that, 10. So here's a question. We get down, the next typically would be operation of water and operation of sewer, which is fine, and we can leave those as 11 and 12. I would suggest at that point after that, we might want to talk immediately about the water sewer. Or we can do them before, but we might want to pass the regular budgets.
I would do it.
Although...
I would do the sewer, merging the sewer together before we did that, two articles.
Okay, do you want to merge them first? Because those are the...
But if you merge them first, can you have an article funding one and another one funding the other? If you already merged them?
Yeah, but you're just, make, do no action on those two, because you, if it passes, it all is if it passes.
Yeah.
Hmm, we could.
Okay, that's a good point.
Or I was wondering, do we fund, put the money, allocate this, the money, so that the money gets put in those accounts? And then talk about merging, because then no matter what, the money is allocated in those accounts, whether we merge them, I don't know.
So the clarification here is these are the articles, so this, it just says raise and appropriate? But when you make the motion, you have to state where the money is coming from.
Is SOLA meeting here tonight?
SOLA?
Not meeting in here.
CIPC is over in the Wood Studio. FinCom is next. They must be at the Annex, no? Yeah, let's check. Leah will beat me, but we can both check at the same time.
All I see tonight is Select Board here, CIPC at 7 at the Wood Studio.
So Select Board is discussing what?
We are doing the warrant for annual town meeting right now.
Well, we did talk about the lease for, but that's not...
The Seoul Systems lease for the other property, but we did not talk about the RDIC solar lease tonight.
It's not tonight?
Well, we didn't, because the RDIC has that lease.
So are you looking for Planning Board?
I'm looking for the RDIC information, you know, at a what board?
Okay. Do you want the heights information, the RDIC heights?
Yeah, whatever meeting they're doing, whoever's discussing it, at whatever time, that's what I'm interested in. And I saw that it said solar.
Right.
So I figured I'd come and see if you were discussing solar.
Am I, am I looking at the right thing? I think RDIC met this morning at 9:00 AM.
I don't even see that.
Nope, that's next week.
I was gonna say, I see next Tuesday, their meeting at 9:00 AM, and they met this past Monday night.
Yeah, I was there.
But then the next one that I see on the calendar is the 16th at 9:00 AM.
But you guys aren't discussing the height solar?
Not at all.
No.
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 Okay.
We're not, we're not qualified yet. No, I didn't, shouldn't say that. I'm sorry, I thought these things are wrong.
You're welcome to stay.
Well, it's gonna be a little bit boring then, isn't it? Nobody is here.
No, this is an off-night for us, and this was, this was kind of a preview that we were supposed to deal with on Monday and didn't have time for, so, kind of just a working...
It's being taped.
Yeah.
So people can catch it on the cable.
Thanks for coming in, visiting.
You're welcome. Sorry to interrupt.
Not at all.
No worries. Yep.
So we're gonna leave those as 11 and 12?
Well, Skip's suggestion was, go ahead.
I would rather not, but I mean, I'll go along with the whole board side because...
I don't, I don't feel strongly either way. I was just wondering if it's better to raise and appropriate and say this amount is going to water, and then this amount is going to sewer, and then we ask to merge those that already have the money appropriated versus saying... Because I feel like that could be, then no matter what, the money is in those accounts, and if the merging fails...
Then we're all done with it.
Then we're done. We don't have to take no action on these.
Might be easier to explain.
There won't be enough money if we do that.
I know, I know. I know.
Oh.
I mean, that's our hope, right, is that
Well...
we need money to cover the bills. But, I mean, I can, I can also see your argument in saying, create the account and then put the money in the account. Right? Is that...
Kind of that way, because...
Is there an article to fund the merged account?
No, it's just to combine the account. We don't fund it out of general government money.
I know, but...
So it's only to combine the existing funds, if that makes sense.
So then, to me, that kind of meets, reads, raise and appropriate in the money to go to water, and then raise to appropriate the money to go to sewer, and then take, ask to take those accounts and put them together.
Didn't, didn't he put in the...
What's the article? Where's the article?
It's R, page four.
Who put together the draft here? Mike?
Mike, yep.
So he's, he's just to have a, have a process, a thought process on why.
Well, I don't know that he did. He followed last year's, which is why we have the order we do, which has been consistently our order. This year, we've got something special with water sewer. I guess what I would say is, to Skip's point, let's, even for a rough tonight, it sounds to me like we want it close. We just don't know if we want it first or last, right?
I totally agree with that.
Sure.
All right.
Somewhere, I thought that we talked, maybe I was, you know, I could have been dreaming, but didn't we talk about borrowing a couple of $3 million for this thing?
We will go out for bond as part of a project, but that will be on this town warrant.
All right.
Yeah. Their, the goal is to try to borrow for any of the work, right? But that, yeah, that's not on this.
Yeah, for some reason, I thought it was...
No, you're right. No, you're absolutely right, $3 million, that's the water side of it.
And I think that that was an, if the, if the accounts aren't merged, I think that then the option, then we're looking at having to, right?
No, so...
Either way.
So, so currently, sewer enterprise free cash has been subsidizing regular sewer costs. Water enterprise free cash has been hoarded for about nine or 10 years. And to combine those, we're going to offset that with our sewer deficit.
Right.
Excuse me, our, offset it to the super deficit.
So what, what's gonna happen if we put the, the merging article first and it gets shot down?
Then you still...
Then you deal with the other one, the other two separate.
Then you can vote on the other one separately.
Separately.
Well, yeah, we'll still vote on them, and I actually don't see any reason why they won't pass. We can check with legal. What we're gonna have to do if it doesn't pass is revisit as sewer commissioners, the rates, and they will have to go up even more than
That's right.
than what we've planned.
That's right. So what is in the best interest to try to not be in that situation?
I would think so. But I don't know that it affects the actions at town meeting, because it's a sewer commissioners rate change.
So for now, we just put it at 11, 12, 13?
11, 12, 13.
And maybe we can ask Mike if legal has a preference as to, is it easier to create an account and then fund
Right.
one account, or is it easier to fund individual accounts and then vote to merge the, those already funded individual accounts?
Well, so, yeah, the way these are phrased, of course, it says department, so that actually wouldn't change. What will change is the, the enterprise accounts, which will come later.
So JK and L are 11, 12, 13?
11, no, JK and R.
Is it 11, 12, 13?
11, 12, 13. And we'll see what they say about R.
But now, wait, can I ask, that's fine, but can I ask, are we asking to merge? I thought we were asking to merge waters, the enterprise accounts.
Correct.
But 11 and 12 here, J and K, are not enterprise accounts, they are the departments.
No, that's...
No, it's just the phrasing, they're still, they're all run under enterprise, yeah, sorry.
No, I, I thought that that was the case, and then I, sorry.
And honestly, if we have questions, probably means the phrasing will need to be made clear if ever we have. All right. What's interesting is, after that, we get down and, and these are all the sort of, okay, new for us this year articles.
Yep.
Or, or they're articles that we typically do. So the article L, which we're up to 14, is cable. Now, it's interesting, and I, I don't know, Skip, I don't necessarily remember, the legislation and the, and the MGL regarding the PEG access funds. If you notice, it says further, at the close of the fiscal year, all unspent funds shall be closed back to the PEG access and cable-related fund, meaning they don't go into
General fund, free cash.
Free cash, the way the others do. And I'm not sure if we have to do that or not. Do you know that answer?
Well, you're taking the money out of the fund.
Yeah, you gotta put it back.
True.
If you don't use it, you put it back.
I don't know if you do. Do you know for sure that you do? Yeah.
No, I think you do, but...
Okay.
It would make sense. Logically, it would make sense.
Because, because there's no way that it can go into general fund, otherwise PEG is no longer exist, and we don't have any cable. That's kind of in the contract.
I think my question is, the PEG monies come in from user fees over the course of the year and are expended. And at the end of the year, it's possible that those could revert to general fund, but I don't know the answer to that.
No, it can't.
All right. So you think this is...
You gotta, you gotta read the contract, she'll...
Oh, yes, you do.
The contract is pretty
Yeah.
pretty blank, pretty blunt, and says
All right.
this, this, and this, and if this doesn't happen, then we want all our money back, see you later, bye.
Okay.
So we want that to be 14?
14?
Yeah.
Onward, okay.
Just for clarification, the PEGs are monies that are coming in through the cable bills that people are paying, so it's not money that the town is...
It's no-town money whatsoever. Individual money, no-town money whatsoever.
Right.
Yep.
And that PEG, that money built this place right here.
Oh, yeah, 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 no, I know that the money is, yeah, but I just wasn't, I wanted to be clarified that it was...
Yeah, no, that's, way back when, I had that complaint, I asked that question too.
Yeah, yeah.
No-town money going to this.
Yep, right, right.
Thank you.
This article, which is the top of page three, article 15, and I don't, again, I don't, to the view to my left, I don't remember, we added this, I want to say two years ago. It is an article that has been deemed required, and the towns have been adding it. We actually never did this, we never took this action, but we started to. And we're treating it now, capital budget, the way we treat Chapter 90 funds, which is, are we going to appropriate these monies based on the capital budget?
So it's just required?
Yep.
Okay. And this would be before we start getting into the...
Capital equipment, buildings, facilities, yeah.
And that would be 15.
Information, so 15. So 15.
Yep, 15.
Any idea what the fire department one is about?
So this is special legislation that they'd like to do, and it has been done in the past because Dave Williams will hit the, the age cap.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and he, they'd like to keep him on for a while longer, and he...
Gotcha, so it's a good, okay. Well, we put that on earlier than later for the guys?
I would actually suggest, now we have 14 is cable, 15 is now capital budget. I would suggest we make 16, if you look at S, to apply for, accept, and expend any grants, which is again, one of those sort of straightforward, here's what we have to do.
Okay. For 16?
Yeah. Same thing for 17, so this is allowing the Board of Selectmen to, Selectmen to enter into contracts under 30B. Again, kind of like a, a no-brainer.
Yes, it is.
So that would be 17, and then finally, Chapter 90, which is lettered U right now. So those are our sort of business articles, dry, you know, legalese articles. If we were to continue with that, the one that's lettered V is actually the same thing, and that's our revolving funds, and that's the last one. And that would take us through to 19, if we were to do that. So then we would jump... So then we would jump back. We've essentially done the opening. The managed growth bylaw, all the schools, all the money. What is the W zoning? So planning board, um, submitted that. It is an update to an issue that they have in one particular district. That's being designated one thing in one place and industrial in another, so it's kind of a cleanup article.
And because it's zoning, it's also two thirds, correct?
Uh, yeah, and, well, actually, this is listed as majority vote.
No, I, I mean, down here.
Oh, no, two thirds, you're right, you're right, two thirds. It makes me wonder now that we've just numbered all these.
Should we move that up with the other planning?
I know. Anybody care?
No, I think we'll leave it right where it is.
Leave it?
Keep mixing it up a little bit so they don't get bored.
So they don't get.
Keep them on their toes.
Keep them on their toes.
So what are we doing with the fire department, uh, N, N O P? And agricultural, the two agricultural ones in the fire department.
Well, so here's the question. So we just did general government, all the schools, all the money, all the business. And now we are left with everything from N. And then we, and then we skip, right? We did the business stuff, N, and then over to W. And then that last page, which is the appropriations of weird amounts.
Mm-hmm.
Which I think were pushed over to see if we could get them in. Uh, there was discussion initially of, of whether or not they'd be on the special. Um, I can tell you looking that the article Z and double A are the ones we just talked about. That I think we can wait until the fall for. Um, the one for Y, DPW vehicle, the CIPC didn't recommend it. We don't have the money for it. And Joe indicated he could wait, well, he said a year, which I was surprised at, but that's what he said.
Which ones?
This is, uh, Y, the DPW article.
So we can delete it?
We can delete it, X it out.
Yeah.
We can X out Z. We can X out double A. Uh, we can X out AC. Because.
Don't we need to?
No, we need to do that. AC, we have to do.
Keep that on.
Yep, we absolutely have to do it. I think at this point, we could, we could maybe talk about working our way up from the bottom or. Or what's after our revolving funds? So.
If you wanna get the fire department in there somewhere.
Fire?
Well, I was wondering, do we wanna do revolving fund, then the planning board subcommittee and then go to fire? Or do we wanna do fire, planning board?
I'd like to think this one, W, will be straightforward.
Right.
It's meant to be just a correction. So, yeah, we could do that if you want.
I don't have a preference into the order of dollars, I just wasn't sure.
So you wanna do, just for now, and again, this is kind of working, let's do twenty slash twenty-one for W. So it's either, same thing with fire. It's either twenty or twenty-one. And so.
The Dave Williams article?
Yes.
Yep.
And ag commission will be twenty-two and twenty-three?
Yeah, that puts ag at the end. Before public works, which makes me wonder if we should move public works up. Yeah, do you wanna, do you wanna do planning board, fire? The thing with public works is, it'll come up, it will get questioned rightly about what's included in this number.
Yep.
And then the discussion needs to address the fact that regardless of what happens here, it's on the ballot. So we're either going to, appropriate it tonight under the assumption that it might go, but if it doesn't, you know, sort of either way, we're fine, we're quote, safe. Um, yeah. So our options for last are the prop two and a half, the charter, and the two ag articles. At the moment.
Well, we decided, we took O or Q off, right? Sorry, Wayne.
Sorry.
Q was the thirty thousand for the senior center study? Cause we decided, we, is that?
Hold it on that.
Well, we, I mean, that wasn't.
We took that off, yeah, we took it off.
We took it off the ballot.
The ballot. We should take it off of here too.
I think it, well, it would have to be appropriated from free cash at this point, having taken it off the ballot, if we were gonna do it.
I mean, we can keep it on there and see how free cash numbers come in. That's, I mean, it's not looking promising right now, right?
Whoa, whoa, whoa. I don't think Nancy has any problem if it's not on the ballot. I mean, on the, uh.
I don't, I don't necessarily mind waiting until the fall, as long as we feel like we're moving in the right direction. I will say, I, um, was able to speak to the alliance club this week and I had two questions, very specific to senior housing and what the town was doing about it. And wondering if we had any plans to actually have the town construct and manage housing and have a housing authority. And it makes me wonder if this number, that, you know, we kind of threw out thirty thousand based on what Wes Boylston spent. Sh- if we shouldn't have, and I think you said it, have the committee do some more legwork, or some legwork since they haven't started yet. Through the summer and actually see what we need at the end of the feasibility design. Because if somebody said to us that there actually might be grant funds for something where we combine housing in a senior center.
Yeah.
Maybe we're not there yet. And I get, that makes sense to me, so.
Yeah.
So.
So X it off?
Table it, yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
And.
Make sure they understand why though, so they don't.
I haven't stepped in this week to the, um, council on aging, Skip. Do you think that Nancy, Nancy's not gonna be upset by that? I mean, do you think she's, okay?
She's not gonna be upset.
I talked to her yesterday.
Okay, good.
As long, as long as you're moving forward on it.
As long as we're doing something.
Now's the time.
Committee going to start and.
Right.
We're actually behind the times.
And direct the committee to doing some of the stuff that we're spending money for.
The groundwork, yeah.
Groundwork.
But I think if we have a committee that's able to walk in in the fall and say, here's what we've done, here's how much we now need for the feasibility design.
Yeah, I agree, yeah. No problem with me doing that.
And if that has turned into less feasibility and more architecturals, I think people will be far more likely to wanna spend money.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Than just, let's see if we need it. I think we'll probably pass that.
Anybody know how we stand in town for elderly housing? We, we have too much, too little, or we're on board, or?
According to the gentleman who spoke at the Lions Club on Tuesday, um, they said that they are not even taking names anymore on the wait lists. For the designated senior housing and that the, all the new construction coming up is clearly not.
Mm-hmm.
Designed, meant for empty nester seniors, but either in the way it's structured or the size of it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it's out of price range.
So, that tells me we're way behind.
Yeah.
Obviously.
Yep.
Same with forty B housing, too.
Yeah.
I would rather see seniors.
We've always been way behind on that.
Rather see the seniors than the forty B, but that's me.
Off the top of my head, I don't know enough about forty B to know if affordable senior housing helps us to meet that quota. That's a question that we could ask. I don't, I honestly don't know if it does.
Oh, I don't think so.
I read, I read that somewhere recently.
I don't, I don't know.
I was just thinking that, there was just something that I saw about it and I can't.
It'd be nice.
Okay.
So we got like four left. I think that information is, some years back when they tried to do the building moratorium. I think that information is in that packet. Whether you have to use it or not.
It might be.
For some reason, I think that's where I read it.
So we have N O. Um, which are the two ags and then A B, which is the charter, and A C, which is the DPW. Left place, is that?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, it's possible that we're better off pushing the DPWs way, way up. Possibly even before the managed growth, now that I'm thinking about it. A little more.
Now.
I think it needs to be.
I think it should be after schools, to be honest with you.
I was, yeah, I, I, but I don't know how much after schools. I worry that if. You guys probably have a better sense than I do. We talk about schools because schools often are associated with some sort of override.
Mm-hmm.
And then we talk, but not this year, currently. If we then talk about DPW being an override, is that going to be a bad taste? I don't know.
Maybe like, we're fin- we're finally not asking for extra money for the schools, but we're gonna do it for something else.
Right.
Couple of years back, we did an override. We got it all and the school came, took it all, so anyway, the highway for the general government.
You guys have a better sense than I do.
I think, you know, one of the things is when people first walk into town meeting, um, they're a little bit energized. A lot of times, they don't necessarily have at their fingertips everything that's going on.
Right.
And they're trying to get caught up. And we try to sort of warm them up with the easy ones, if that makes sense.
Yep.
I would like to say that this is an easy one relative to getting them accustomed to the process. Because we have to talk about the fact that it's a debt exclusion and not an override, and in fact, a capital exclusion, so it's only one year. We'll have to explain what's included in that number, what the tax impact will be. And the fact that regardless of our vote tonight, it's on the ballot. It's been placed on the ballot. And so they can agree to essentially fund it based on the results of the ballot. Or no, they don't wanna fund it even if the ballot passes it. Typically, they're gonna go ahead and say, yep, you know, it's already on the ballot.
Don't you think it would make sense to put this in front of the schools? Before the schools, and they, so they know that the purse is starting to get a little bit tighter.
I mean, we have contentious issues, so I'm starting to think we want this one out of the way before things get contentious.
So then let's move it back then.
So.
Before the school. Because this is, this is a big.
I'll make it, make a number of what, what happened to three.
Put it, put it for two point five or two and a half.
Yeah.
And, and Michael know that it's gonna go.
Before managed growth.
So it'll be annual reports, fix the salaries, essentially approve a ballot questions results. That'll be our next one.
That makes sense.
So two point five and.
Two point five.
Two point six? Both of them?
What's that?
You're talking about these, right? Public works?
The, um.
I think Y is not.
Just AC.
I think Y, we're gonna hold off on.
Yep, just AC. And Y, yeah, Y, we're gonna hold, yeah. Okay, so now we have charter and ag.
Now, I thought you, I thought we put charter in as, uh, next.
I'll be honest.
Next number is twenty-two, yeah.
Um.
Twenty-two for the twenty-two large year.
I'll be honest, for the charter, we are asking them to deal with quite a few large issues this night. Namely, the managed growth and the water sewer enterprise combination. I personally wait for this, that's.
Well, towards the, to the end?
No, I would.
You mean, kick it to the fall?
Take it off?
To the fall.
That's fine, I mean.
And I suppose we could do yet another committee, while we, charter research. I don't know if you guys have been following it, but which town is it? Westminster?
No.
Westminster spent three years prepping, went to town meeting and it just failed spectacularly and it was very divisive. And it was essentially a lot of people accusing the board of selectmen of a power grab.
Well, then, I mean, the charter, the, the, is a, is a change of, the form of government, right?
Yeah, and it's a huge undertaking. It takes a year.
Built up to this, or talk, or anticipation.
Right.
People are gonna be seeing this for the first time.
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, do you think that it's an appropriate fall?
Yeah, I like that.
Question though. Because that was my concern, was that it, that I felt that it should be a better spring. And I think that this kind of goes to the, what we were struggling with on Monday night with the school cameras and everything, was timing wise. I'm fine if, if the board is in consensus that it's an okay fall item. Since it would be funding, basically funding. A, an agency to assist in the development of, of developing a town charter.
Right.
It's not actually voting on the charter, but it is.
Yep.
It's another one of these feasibility things that we talked about on Monday. It's twenty-two thousand dollars that.
And it does take like three plus ye- potentially three plus years. I think most of the timelines I've looked at are generally in the three, three and a half.
Yep.
Year frame to do it well. And hopefully that's, I mean.
Right, right, right.
I'm happy to push it to the fall too.
Is everybody okay with waiting?
Yeah.
Do a little homework, okay.
Fall.
So we've now pushed Y, Z, double A, double, and A B.
Yep.
Okay. Alright, it means we're ending with ag.
Yeah.
Are we okay with that?
Sure. That'd be twenty-two and twenty-three.
Yeah. And, uh, and I think the only thing, and, and again, you know, we don't have to decide this tonight, uh, let's see, so Mike's recommendation, their request was for five thousand. His recommendation is reduced to five hundred. Um. We typically don't put amounts of everything, so for example, general government in the articles. Some towns do. Um, we typically put it in the motions. In this case, this particular article, it would need to go in, the amount needs to go in the article. So we don't need to decide tonight, but ultimately it will be printed.
Okay.
Prepare for them to take offense.
Well, no, I.
At the end and you reduce it to five hundred.
I mean, I have been talking with them as their liaison and said, you know, they said five thousand was what they were putting in for. And I said, I don't think that that's feasible this year.
This just opens the. Well, the biggest thing is just to get the account open.
They want the account open for sure and I've, and I feel strongly personally, if we're opening an account, we should make a good faith effort to put something in that account.
Yeah.
Yeah, starts it up, yep. Thousand dollars would be plenty to start it, and that's what they did for everybody else.
Right. And then, you know, I think the longer term hope is that there's some way to sustainably, be more intentional about funding it, but also with a plan as to how that money is, is used, so.
Right, so.
Which they're developing.
That's great. Yeah, and, and that can come up too, because the MGL that they are referencing, the new one that changed back in sixteen, that's section eight L. One of the sections is, um, pretty much what you just said, that they, where is it?
So, no, it's N and O are the same. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Oh, what?
N and O are the same. You're looking to put money in the open, open space.
And they wanna.
Preservation.
For, and they wanna open, create an account, cause there is no such account currently. And then O is saying, can you put some, here is five thousand dollars. Into the, the account that you just voted to open.
Did you read Mike's recommendation? He recommends that this be moved to the fall. He said, we just don't have the capacity to fund five thousand or fund, should it be created? He suggests moving it to the fall.
Although in the front, it says reduced to five hundred.
Right.
He might mean, he might mean reduce the five thousand to the fall. Um, well, in one of the sections anyway, says, the commission shall adopt rules and regulations governing the use of land and water under its control. And prescribe civil penalties not exceeding, et cetera, which they haven't, they're not ready yet, they haven't done that yet. So it, it's entirely appropriate probably to not start funding it on a large scale.
Oh, yeah.
At least from a town perspective, tax dollars. Now, they can actually take gifts as well, so opening the account doesn't preclude them from adding more money. This is really just a, how much tax dollars are we throwing in to kind of say, okay, we're seeding it.
Yep.
And I'm okay with what Mike said, I don't.
He thought we already gave, don't, gave, give them money.
We give money to the agricultural commission, but this will go in the fund, this will be separated out. We'll treat this essentially like the, um, the other savings accounts that we have, capital stabilization.
Okay.
So, I mean, I personally would like to see the account created and some dollar, some dollar amount go in as a, like, good faith. We, as a town, are here for that, but.
So, I'm okay with Mike's five hundred.
Mm-hmm.
Will actually have to at that point back, back into the special town meeting and ensure that there's enough money left that we have it at the annual to even give them five hundred. Cause there's been years that we've had zero.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Is there any more business to come before the board? We made a good start. No?
Um. We can make the next meeting there in eleven minutes, the, uh.
Yep.
Finance, that's good.
Yep. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn, um, at our regular, uh, our special BOS meeting at six forty-nine PM.
Second.
One favor?
Hi.
Good time. We are adjourned? We are adjourned?